Councilor Bennett is absent. Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Karavayev?
Chair McCoy?
Here.
And sitting in for Councilor Bennett is Joan Glass?
Joan Lloyd.
Joan Lloyd, thank you.
Speak up.
If we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No additions and deletions. Do we have any public comment? No public comment. We're to the consent calendar. Commissioner Lewis, do you have a motion for me?
Yes, I move passage of the consent calendar for the Housing Authority meeting of June 6, 2016.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Andy, would you sort of briefly summarize what these resolutions are here on the consent calendar for the public, please?
Certainly would. Thank you, sir. The first agenda, the first item on the agenda is, I don't know if we use the file number or not, but...
Three, two ways, fine, Evan.
Adoption of 2016-2017 Public Housing Agency Plan, Capital Fund Statement and Five-Year Action Plan. Annually HUD asks public housing authorities to complete a annual plan that basically sets forth the activities that the housing authority would be proposing to undertake. It also provides for capital fund. Capital funds are received through the agency from HUD to make repairs and improvements to the public housing units. And then, of course, the Five-Year Action Plan tells us what we're going to be doing, like a strategic plan over five years as it relates to HUD business. There are a few changes that we've noted in the document. Most of them are fairly minor. One that continues to be modified year after year seems to be the Violence Against Women Act, and so there's some different definitions in there now that broaden that, which is great. We also have the RAD Rental Assistance Demonstration Program that the Commission approved. That's in the new plan, and other minor kind of changes. The second is the subject is to approve the Revised Family Self-Sufficiency Program Action Plan. Salem Housing Authority has a family self-sufficiency program where we work with our clients to help them gain economic familial skills in order to earn more money and have a better upwardly mobile opportunity. And so HUD has offered to S.H.A. for us to participate in a program that brings together the family self-sufficiency program with another, the family unification program. We manage both. HUD has offered to us because we manage both programs to participate. And the big change when you bring these two together is youth who are fostering out, 16 to 24, they right now only have an opportunity to go through a family self-sufficiency phase or program for 18 months, whereas all the other families can go through 5, 60 months. And so this really modifies the program. In the report, we provided some pretty compelling information about how youth, when they're coming out of fostering, and how quickly they can backtrack, and so we think this is a great opportunity to give them more time in the family self-sufficiency program, helping to stabilize them, and that's really what that's all about. Third is Inglewood West Apartments Refinance and Bond Issue. S.H.A. was the original developer of Inglewood West, a senior property, 54 units, and it's gone through, it's a tax credit project, but we own it outright now because it's beyond 15 years. It has a loan that's due next year, and we're proposing to issue a private placement bond that would go to the proposed lender, Columbia State Bank. We've done this same model several times before. It gets the lowest interest rates. It also saves us a substantial amount of interest payments over the course of a 15-year, and at the end of 15-year, we will be debt-free on that property. The difference is about almost $100,000 over the 15-year period in savings to the agency. So that's something we hope is, will work out well. Finally, kind of an odd one for us, just to be candid, we're a housing agency generally, but increasingly the nexus between housing and healthcare are being melded together with the new CCO, which is a Willamette Valley Healthcare, which is the coordinating healthcare entity in the city, or in the county region, Polk County and Marion County, including the City of Salem. We've been working with the healthcare professionals, trying to find out what population that they're most interested in, in housing, and so this is a culmination of that. And really, this program is, we're going to connect our clients, which is almost 10,000 people, as well, we're going to bring in partners, West Valley, the Housing Authority in the county of Polk, Marion County Housing Authority, and the three housing authorities jointly are going to apply for and create a program that would help our clients at the basist level to make sure, for instance, they're enrolled in the health plan. We don't know those things. Those are privacy issues, but we're going to, we're going to put a program in place that will have access for our clients to understand better where the resources are, how they can get there. I note in this report that there's going to be a grant, and there's going to be some hiring for two years for, for limited-term duration. I would think West Valley would hire our staff, Marion County would hire our staff, S.H.A. would hire too on a limited duration, and that's really to engage all of our clients with surveys, with training, with access, and so we're really excited about that. We think even if it's, you know, connects with half of our residents and our clients, that's a pretty substantial number, and so we're excited about that.
Great, thank you. We had a couple of questions. Commissioner Anderson, then Commissioner Dickey?
Thank you very much, Chair. Andy, I want to talk a little bit about what you just talked about, and I want to commend you for doing this because it sure seems to me that, and we've talked about this in our homeless task force issues that have been presented, you can't just deal with the issue of housing and then not look at all the other issues, and health is an extremely crucial matter to keep people in housing and to keep them in jobs to help pay for their housing. So I think this is a terrific program, and dare I even use the word, it's a holistic plan for people in the housing units that you're serving. So I think this is terrific, and I commend you for that. Then I have a question or two about, I want to say the same thing about the Family Self-Sufficiency Program Action Plan, and I, too, I read your update, and there's, I guess, two things I want to comment on. One is the, in the people in the family, the racial/ethnic composition of the family self-sufficiency program is higher in minorities for the family sufficiency, and I think that, again, is a good thing. It's a holistic way to look at it. And then I'm also very pleased on page eight and nine of your report, the, all the FSS activities and support services and how you identify those needs, and I wonder if you could talk about that just briefly, about the partners you have to help in this family self-sufficiency, which, again, is also kind of treating everything, not just the housing needs, the needs of the people in our city.
In, the Housing Authority really is a housing service provider. We very seldom do we get outside of our parameters of what we do well, and so when we're going outside our parameters, we're always, number one, first and foremost, looking for the partners that know how to deliver the right services. So we're in a facilitation role. It's, over the multiple years, Salem Housing Authority's been facilitating the Emergency Housing Network. All the same partners are there, all the medical partners, social service partners, and so it's a big tent. We're happy to have those partners. They're going to do the heavy lifting, really, with the clients, so we're just going to kind of put them along the line, right?
Good, well, that's a terrific program. Thank you very much. Commissioner Dickey?
Thanks, I kind of have the same comments as Commissioner Anderson. I'm really excited about this health initiative that you guys are doing. I think that as more people are required to have health insurance and the health, just the whole healthcare system becomes more complicated, having somebody that is in a supportive role to help people not only navigate that system, but to understand how they can be more healthy and, you know, and all of those risk factors that are listed in the staff report that I won't mention, but I think it's a great idea, and I love the model that we would be working with. It's not just us, it's, you know, it's us, and it's the Marion County Housing Authority and Polk County. I think that's a great way to address it by doing a regional approach.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Andy, for the explanations. I wanted a little more thorough explanation, just to, for those watching, the people present, see the good work that the Housing Authority is doing for the City of Salem and citizens. This is, this is great work, and it's sometimes we go flying right through this agenda, and I want to take a little bit of time and have you tell them what you're doing, because I know you're proud of it and you do a great job for us. So with that, we've got a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. That is it, right? We have, point out that there's an information report that has a program management report that we see here pretty much every meeting, once a month, with the ratings and everything still pretty much full and going full bore, and everything we've got to spend has been spent in the community and helping folks out, so. There are no special orders of business, unfinished business, or new business, so therefore this meeting of the Housing Authority of Salem is adjourned.
...of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for Monday, June 6, 2016. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett is absent. Joan Lloyd is sitting in his place. Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member McCoy?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Benjamin?
Here.
Board Member Bednarz?
Here.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here. And I'd like to say a special thank you and welcome to Joan Lloyd. Nice to see you sitting in that chair.
It's an honor to be here.
Well, we're happy you're here, thank you. A little bit of training on the microphone. We do need to speak right up into the microphone, Ms. Lloyd, if you do speak, so that we get that on the record and try to hear everything you say. Okay, so don't be afraid of it. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, Member McCoy, do you have a motion for us regarding the agenda?
Oh, my God. I move approval...
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar. Second. Well?
We're not there.
Well? There?
I don't believe we have any additions today.
We don't have any additions.
No, we don't have any, sorry. All right, so you are, we're ready for public comment, I think.
Second.
And we do have someone here for public comment.
Okay. Why not me?
All right, Jeff Miller, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Again, Jeff Miller, address, can I give the address, is that correct?
Or Ward.
Or Ward.
Either.
I'm in Ward 8. I'm here to speak about Ward 5 in support of the action item 4.3, specific to 16-051. I'm here on behalf of Mike Bliven, who owns the property, and he could be here tonight. He sends his apologies, so he asked me to come down and address the group and see if there's any questions that I can answer.
All right.
So that's about it. I'm here for support.
All right, during this time, you actually have three minutes if you want to actually provide testimony at this, but you don't have any, anything in addition to what we have in our agenda?
No, I believe that you received a package with some photos and some supporting documents, and essentially I'm just here to answer questions or be supportive of that document, and I guess since I've got three minutes, and I'm not a big public speaker, so apologize, do want to just say that this building has been in quite, just quite a bit of disrepair for many, many years. Tremendous amount of dry rot. The roof apparently is the same roof from 1971, it's leaked price since 1981, so lots of dry rot. I think probably 80, 90 percent of the ceiling tiles and light covers are stained and ruined that need to be updated. You know, I can go on and on, I don't want to bore everyone with it. Long story short, it is in desperate need of some help. The gentleman who purchased the building, Mike Bliven, is looking for support, looking for help to kind of repurpose that building, re-tenant the building over time, and just really needs a lot of assistance in that regard, so.
Excellent.
Yeah?
Well, we do appreciate you coming. I think there is a question, yes.
Yes, please.
Member Lewis?
Thanks for coming down. I have two questions, really. One, I'm curious if you have any sense of how quickly these repairs would be done, and second question is, has there been any interest as far as leases going forward?
There, well, to answer the first question, the intent, I believe, is to have everything done prior to the rainy seizing, so I think the intention is, if this is approved tonight, that he's looking to move forward immediately with, or at least get it on the books, because most roofers are busy this time of year, as everyone probably sure knows, getting that taken care of first and foremost, getting some interior things done while he's moving forward, waiting for the roof to be put on, some HVAC updates, some lighting updates, exterior lights, exterior paint, exterior siding, trying to make the building a little bit more safer. But long story short, trying to get all of it wrapped up prior to September. I think that's a lofty goal, based on the contractors that have been engaged to this point. I think it's probably more realistic to be a late September, October, but the roof is really the main concern prior to that rainy season. And your second question regarding interested parties in leasing, there has not been to this point, he just acquired it two weeks ago, and, no, direct answer to this point.
All right, are there any other questions from members of the agency board? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do appreciate you coming down and talking with us. Appreciate that. All right. Then we will move to the consent calendar. Member McCoy, do you have a motion?
Yes, I...
He does.
Yes, I do. I warmed on, a little five minutes ago, I warmed up on it here, so. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member McCoy and seconded by Member Nanki to approve the consent calendar, and is there discussion? Would you like to describe what's on the consent calendar?
Yes, I would.
Member McCoy, and then Member Anderson.
We have the minutes from the May 9, Urban Renewal Meeting, and the May 23, Urban Renewal Meeting. We have an action item, which is 4.3A. It's requiring, would pass the exception to the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area Grant Program Policies, which to allow them to fund a $300,000 grant for redevelopment of the North Gate Center Building at 3850 Portland Road. And by increasing that from $50,000 to $300,000, the new purchaser is going to put up $150,000 to improve the building, which is within the items that are allowed in the North Gate Urban Renewal Area. So what we're really doing is increasing the ground amount authority on this issue from 50 to 300,000. And then there's all, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Member Anderson, do you have a question or comment?
I have a comment on the action item 4.3 that the gentleman spoke about. I think this is terrific. This is exactly what needs to be happening in that urban renewal area, and it hasn't, to a great extent, happened so far, so I think it's terrific. And I also think it's more than coincidental that it is almost directly, not, it's very close, coast across the street from the Career Technical Education Center, and so I think both those things are really going to improve that north end of the development in Counselor Dickey's ward, and I go swimming at the CROC Center, so I'm oftentimes riding my bike or driving that way, and it's really going to improve things. So I think this is terrific, and I also note that we have, for the CTEC, we changed, we went outside of our policies to give them up to $1 million for that, as opposed to the $50,000 that our policy said, so I think, you know, policies are made to be broken when there's good reasons for them, and this is a good reason.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, are there other questions or comments regarding the motion on the consent calendar? If not, we'll move to the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no information reports tonight for the Urban Renewal Agency, and no special orders of business, so we'll move to the public hearing. And our public hearing tonight is on the 2016-17 Salem Urban Renewal Agency Budget. I believe we have a staff person right there, Ms. Kelly Jacobs, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, and I'll be very brief in my introduction to the public hearing. The Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee recommended a budget to the agency board on May 11, 2016. The agency board is required to hold a public hearing on the recommended budget. In compliance with state public budget law, this evening's public hearing was noticed in the Statement Journal on May 26, 2016. Following the public hearing, staff recommends the Urban Renewal Agency Board deliberate on the budget committee recommended budget, and direct staff to return on June 27, 2016 with a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2016-17 Urban Renewal Agency Budget. At that meeting, staff may request the agency board amend the fiscal year 2016-17 budget approval made this evening to include any rebudgeted purchase orders or carryover projects from the fiscal year 2015-16 budget, which staff are currently identifying. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And do we have anyone signed up for public testimony this evening?
We do not.
We do not, all right. Then I will close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion. Member McCoy?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we direct staff to return on June 27, 2016 with a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2016-17 Urban Renewal Agency Budget. That resolution should include the council's budget recommendation, as well as re-appropriations, which would be projects, orders in the current budget that are in process and will not be completed or received prior to June 30.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Member McCoy and seconded by Member Bednarz to adopt the recommendation of the budget and direct staff to return on January 27, June 27, with the final recommendation. Is there discussion among council?
Or the...
Among the agency board members, I should say. Well, apparently not, all right. Then I'll move to the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we have no new business, so this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency Board is adjourned. All right, I would like to call to order this evening's meeting for the Salem City Council for Monday, June 6. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett, by phone. Guest Counselor Joan Lloyd is in his seat. Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Benjamin?
Here.
Counselor Bednarz?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here, thank you. We will start with the approval of additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion for us?
We don't have any. We don't have any. Sorry, ma'am. She's shaking her head. Sorry. There is no motion. Is that what we did? Motion? Okay. I guess, I'm gonna...
I ordered to reorder the agenda.
Move to reorder the agenda, right?
Yeah, right.
I move that we reorder the agenda and move items 4A and 4B to immediately after public comment.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to adjust the, this evening's agenda, to move items 4A and 4B for the public hearing to the area following public comment. Is there discussion regarding that? All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And we have time for council comment and city manager comment. I'd like to open council comment just very quickly and say that the Mayor's International Council is having its first lecture in what we hope will become a series, and the date is on Tuesday, June 21, at 6 o'clock, from 6:00 to 7:30. It's going to be held at the Polis Lecture Hall at Willamette University in the Law School, and the subject of the lecture is "Language in Transition." We thought as an international council, we were always thinking about our languages, and as languages evolve, as people move from one area of the world to another, that it might be interesting to begin a discussion about being an international city by talking about language. So we have a premier researcher and writer and presenter, and Dr. Anderson, and he's going to be talking about his organization, Living Tongues Institute, and then that will be followed by Tony Johnson, who's chairman of the Chinook Indian Nation, and he's going to talk about the development of the Chinook jargon language. And so we think it's going to be a really interesting evening, and we have flyers, and there'll be posters up, and I just want to be sure that everyone knows that this is happening and feels welcome. And again, it's Tuesday, June 21, 6:00 to 7:30, and it's a free lecture sponsored by City of Salem and Willamette University, and by the Living Tongues Institute. Now, do counselors have comments? Counselor Bednarz, Counselor Anderson, Counselor McCoy, Counselor Nanki?
Wow, everybody's talking tonight. Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Mid-Willamette Housing Initiative that we are working on. We spent this afternoon, two hours, hence I didn't get dinner until I sat down in this chair tonight, but it's important because it's critical to this community, the homeless people in our community, people who are home and secure, that we have a discussion in this group, this committee, co-chaired by our own mayor, mayor as well of Kaiser, county commissioners Janet Carlson and Jennifer Wheeler, and there's quite a proliferation of other individuals that have availed themselves of their services. There are several meetings coming up. Today's meeting, by the way, focused on substance abuse, law enforcement diversion, mental health, and detox. We don't even have a single detox place here in this community, I learned. We have coming up on June 9, the Veterans Subcommittee will be meeting, and 13, Health and Housing Subcommittee, June 22, Public Safety Committee, and the Financial Subcommittee, which, again, I think our mayor is chairing that Subcommittee. July 11 will be Health and Housing Subcommittee, and July 20 will be our next task force meeting, and I'm not going to say the time and locations for a reason, because they vary. They vary based on who's meeting, where they're meeting, and many times we're holding them in, obviously in public locations, but we're also trying to hold them in places where those in the community that need those services can attend, making it more convenient for them and their transportation and their access to this. My suggestion is go to the Marion County's website, look for the Mid-Willamette Homeless Initiative, and then... Anyway, with that, I'm very, very, very pleased to say I'm starting to see a little meat form on the bones as the Subcommittee's get to work and try to figure out how to solve aspects of homelessness within our community. And I'm proud to be part of that committee as well as our mayor, and I think Counselor Anderson was there this afternoon in the audience. It's a good way to learn about our community. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. And the task force meeting locations are set at a permanent at this point, and that is in the Kaiser Civic Centers from 4:00 to 6:00 on that date. So thank you for bringing that up. All right. Let's see, who was next? Was it Counselor Anderson, or is that right? All right.
Why not?
Why not?
I'm taking time away from my busy schedule and getting ready on the language seminar that I'll be giving.
I appreciate that.
I also want to say that Ward 1 is a very powerful and crucial ward in this city because not only do we have Counselor Bennett here by phone, and we also have Guest Counsel Joan Lloyd here, and I just want to commend Joan, who is the chairperson of the Nenn Neighborhood Group and has been extremely active in all sorts of civic functions, and so I think I'm happy to have her sitting here next to me.
Great. Thank you. Counselor McCoyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got to attend the Marshallese Community Meeting a week ago Saturday, and it was held at Stevens Middle School out in Hayesville Drive. It was really a fun event. Those are fun people, had a good time. It was really sort of their Independence Day. It's a celebration of their Independence Day from when they gained it from the United States. Had the Prime Minister, I want to say now, Foreign Affairs Secretary from the Marshall Republic of Marshall Islands flew in for the meeting and gave a talk and a speech on the issues that they have. And as you can well imagine, the Marshall Islands are where the Bikini Atoll was, where the atomic tests were made, and which there was a large number of them, which has affected those folks, and it's still an issue for them, looking for compensation and a variety of other things. So he gave a very emotional, excellent speech on that topic. There's probably 250, 300 people there. It was well-attended. So great to see some of the diversity in our communities and the fact that there is a very healthy and active and warm and friendly and happy Marshall Island community of people here. And it was well-attended. I thank you for sending me, because I really enjoyed it.
Well, I appreciated you attending. We have about 6,000 people from the Marshall Islands that live in the Salem area, so it is an important group for us to be interacting with and remembering. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Saturday, I gave the welcome from the City of Salem to the Oregon Republican Party at-large delegate selection convention.
Thank you.
And then proceeded to stay since I had one of those little colored wristbands as well, being a precinct committee person, for about 12 and a half hours. It was a fun day. And of note in my speech was that I knew they would all give 100% that day, and so I contacted Mother Nature, and she decided to deliver 100 as well. So, and encouraged them to stay hydrated.
Yes.
But they picked the delegates that'll go back to Cleveland for the Republican National Convention, and then electors for the Electoral College as well, that will perform their function on either party after the November 7 election.
Great. And this was a statewide meeting?
This was a statewide.
Is that correct? State convention?
Their first credentials report was like 650 --
54.
54.
654. All right.
Precinct committee persons from all around the state of Oregon.
Wonderful. Well, we love being the home, or the host, rather, for statewide conventions because it really boosts tourism.
And I encourage them to spend their funds here while they're in attendance.
Got that up there, Travel Salem? You heard? We're doing our part, yes. And you are too. Thank you. You probably booked it, didn't you? Yes, she's not here yet. Thank you. That's great.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there any more council comment? I'm going to turn to our city manager. Do you have some comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do. I have three announcements. First, the city will be participating in the State Cascadia Rising Training Exercises beginning June 7 and going through June 10. We will be activating our EOC. We will have all of our departments that are involved with emergency preparedness, disaster response, participating in this MACH 9.0, I believe, event. On a more fun note, I would like to remind, I believe there's a memo or an announcement at your seats, but I'd like to remind you and the public of Public Works Day on Saturday, June 16 at Riverfront Park. Also, Public Works will be joined by police and fire, so we're going to have a full complement of fun equipment for kids to climb on and activities such as a water pollution prevention relay, which should be a lot of fun for kids and adults. So I encourage you to come on down, starting at 10:30 and going through 2:00 PM. And then last, in your mailboxes, was a paper copy of the city's water quality report. In addition to the technical quality data that all municipal water supply providers have to produce, there's some very good information regarding the city's water supply and water sources and some tips on how to keep our water supply as clean as possible. We will not be mailing this out to every utility customer. We will be mailing out a file, a piece of paper that has a link to this full report. If you would like those, some paper copies, we do have some extras, and we'd be happy to provide those to you. Again, I'd encourage you to take a look at this report and ask your constituents to as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Any further comments? I think we're all set to move to the next item on our agenda, and that is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up? My goodness. Maybe the heat is keeping people away. Sorry about that, but maybe they'll come when it cools off a little bit. All right. We will move, then, to the item that we have adjusted our agenda for, and that is the public hearing on the 2016-17 budget. Welcome again, Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. And again, I have a brief introduction to this public hearing. Oregon public budget law requires the budget committee to recommend a budget to the city council, which it did on May 11, 2016. Changes made by the budget committee to the city manager's proposed budget are provided as Attachment 1 to the public hearing staff report. The budget committee's fund-level recommended budget appears as Attachment 2 to the staff report. The city council is required to hold a public hearing on the recommended budget. Notice of this evening's public hearing was published in the State's Journal on May 26, 2016. Following the public hearing, staff recommends the city council deliberate on the recommended budget within the restrictions provided in law, which are property taxes cannot be increased from the rate levied by the budget committee, and no funds expenditures can be increased by more than 10%. Within these restrictions, the city council may make changes to the recommended budget. Following deliberation of the budget, the city council is asked to approve any changes to the budget this evening to allow staff to return with a resolution to adopt the budget on June 27, 2016. At that time, staff will ask the city council to amend the budget approval made this evening to include any rebudgeted purchase orders or carryover projects from fiscal year 2015-16, which city staff are currently identifying, as well as any other appropriation needs that were not identified during the budget review process but remain within the 10% cap prescribed by the budget law. A complete list of items to be included in the fiscal year 2016-17 budget will be provided to the city council on June 27, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have anyone signed up for testimony? All right. I see Ken Bearely is signed up. Would you like to speak? Mr. Bearely, welcome.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ken Bearely. I reside at 2308 Tarmigan Street Northwest in West Salem. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about the City of Salem budget. The Salem No Ivy Coalition is very pleased to support the recommendation found in Attachment 1 to the budget that was developed by the budget committee for final additions. It will help us address issue invasive species in Salem. The Salem No Ivy Coalition is greatly encouraged by the recognition of possible public-private partnership that can make a difference here in Salem. We're a group of volunteers. Margaret and Virginia over here have been very active in the No Ivy Coalition, and I've provided each of you with a brief write-up that describes both the issue and our ideas of how we can increase this cooperative approach that's been developed with the city. We identify a possible three-pronged approach that could make some difference in the future. So thank you. The Salem No Ivy Coalition looks forward to building on our strong working relationship with the city, and will be reporting progress to you as it's made. We are very supportive of the recommendation from the budget committee. Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to speak this evening. Are there questions for Mr. Bearely? Well, we really appreciate your service and the service of those others in the community that are pulling this ivy down. It's going to make a difference, and the more people we can educate about also doing it and doing it correctly, the better off we are. Thank you very much. Was there anyone else here this evening who wanted to testify with regard to the budget but did not have a chance to sign up? All right. Then I will close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion from Counselor McCoyd for --
Questions of staff?
I'm sorry. Questions of staff.
Yes, Madam Mayor. If I could, I have a question or two of Ms. Jacobs.
You do? Okay. Well, then, we should definitely have staff come back for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. I'm looking at your staff report here. On the attachment number 1, item number 2 on that's a general fund. I'm a little confused as to how the expenditures proposed in 2B are $115,000, but then in 2C, you've subtracted out $177,750 there. So there's a difference of $62,000 about.
Well, you've actually just very keenly put me on the spot.
Uh-oh. That was not my intention.
You'll need to give me an opportunity to see what we've missed on this list.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if there's anything else there, but I don't see it. It just says decreases wish list items 1 to 6 above, and 1 to 6 above come to $115,600. But then the negative number there is 177.
Well, the last two items in that list alone are $105,000. So I'm thinking perhaps, if you look at, it begins with $50,500.
Yes.
And then 2,000, and then 15,500, 4,500, 75,000.
Okay, so the 115 is wrong, the 177 is right.
The 177, is that a mile?
Yeah.
Okay, so forgive me for my confusion. Where is the 115?
If you look under 2B, there's 1 through 6, and then there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 numbers there, starting with the 50,000 and ending with the 30,000, but the total is $115,600. No, 115 million. Okay. Then I get it. Now I get it. That's my mistake, not yours.
Boy, I am so relieved.
So you're putting me on the spot. Or I should say, I just put myself on the spot. There's too many decimal points, you know? You're talking million dollars here, a million dollars there, pretty soon, to quote the late, great Everett Dirksen, you're talking about real money.
Yes.
Any other questions, Counselor?
No. My face is red enough already. Thanks.
All right. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam. As long as we're talking about, just as you were reading the intro piece on that, it just brought a question, because council can't increase over 10% in a budgeted line item. Is there any?
In a fund.
In a fund.
In a fund.
Can we reduce all we want, then? We just can't increase?
You can reduce.
Okay. Just, I thought that was probably the case, because we just never asked.
All right. Are there other questions from counselors? Do we have a further motion? Do we? All right. So no more questions for staff, so I will.
Now we can close the public.
Now we close the public hearing. Thank you, Brad. I'm Counselor Nanki. I depend on you for this guidance. Thank you. All right. And do we have a motion?
He's trying to find it.
Okay.
I'm trying to find it in all these places.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that council direct staff to return on June 27, 2016 with a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2016-17 City of Salem budget, and that they increase appropriation authority in the Building and Safety Fund Community Development Department budget by $173,380 to provide for the addition of two full-time equivalent positions.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor McCoyd and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to adopt the recommendation, the recommended budget for 2016-17, to direct staff to return, excuse me, with the resolution to adopt the budget. Is there discussion? Counselor McCoyd or others? Okay. Counselor Dickey, followed by Counselor Bednarz.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, would this be the appropriate time to, for an amendment to the motion? I just don't understand process.
Is that, all right.
Okay. All right. So I move to amend the original motion to add $1.7 million to the Fire Department budget for the purpose of increasing fire staffing levels, ultimately with the goal of reducing fire response times throughout the city.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to amend the motion that was offered by Counselor McCoyd to include $1.7 million for the staffing for the Fire Department as described by Counselor Dickey. Okay. Is there discussion? Counselor Dickey, followed by Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Four years ago, one of the hardest decisions I've ever made sitting on this council was to close two fire stations, Fire Station 8 and Fire Station 11. We know that that has had a ripple effect throughout the city on our fire service responses, and now we have four years of data to back that up, but we've seen response times consistently get longer throughout the city, really. And frankly, we're seeing now more development happening now that the economy's turning around, so not only do we currently have slower response times, but our city's growing, and we're seeing development in several areas of the city as well. This is public safety. This is what we do in government. You know, we can argue about the details of all the extraneous stuff that we like to do or want to do, but I feel like this is like the most important thing that we do. And seeing those numbers go down over the last four years and having, you know, having that data to show it's time to do something, and so I think, I've been thinking about this for an entire year, because we saw some of that data last year, and I think it's time to do something. I think this is very important for the safety of all of the residents throughout the city, and I think that, I have confidence in our fire chief that he will put these funds to their highest and best use in order to bring the biggest benefit throughout the city.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis, followed by Counselor Bednarz, and then Counselor McCoyd.
You know, I couldn't agree with Counselor more, especially since I live in one of the wards where the fire station was closed. The only thing I can think that might be worse is to open a fire station and then have to close it again a few years later. And my concern is the sustainability of the funding for $1.7 million a year, next year, the year after that. And so again, my concern is, is this something that is sustainable when we look out into the future from a budget standpoint?
All right. Counselor Bednarz?
So I noticed that it was not specific to Station 8, and that was one of the things, we're going to keep it in general and let the, the chief, thank you.
And the city manager.
And the city manager decide how that money is spent. Now, the second question that I had, and the crucial one that I had even in the budget committee, the funds coming, this one point -- this $1.7 million isn't just in air, and there's, at this moment, the thing proposed to be cut. So, ergo, it's got to come from the ending fund balance. I want to have a small discussion in reference to that ending fund balance, because I know, at least in discussion, part of that was money that was set aside obligations, financial obligations that this city has for PERS funding. And I don't want to be jeopardizing one end to get the other end. We're building up an ending fund balance that has risen. How does this affect our money set aside? And I don't know if Kelly Jacobs could come back. I don't know who has the best answer for that. But that's my concern. It's just making sure there's funds left over if we spend $1.7 million.
All right.
Well, in reference to your question about the, what we are describing as the PERS reserve, by the end of this current fiscal year, by the end of 2015-16, we anticipate that the fund balance will include approximately $6.8 million of funds that have been basically set aside, not needed, for our PERS obligation because of the difference in the budgeted rate as opposed to the charge rate. Now, we know that in 2017-18, the rates will increase.
So, didn't we have an ending fund balance of, correct me if I'm wrong, somewhere in the 20s?
Twenty, well, it's currently almost 20, in the current fiscal year, 15-16, almost 25 million. And, and so, by the end of this year, we're anticipating about 24 million, and 6.8 of that would be that PERS set aside.
Six, oh, for the set aside. It's not extra money that's setting, it's not the money that's going to affect...
It's in, it's in that 24, that 24-plus million dollar number.
Well, I've said, I've said for a long time that that, the PERS set aside should be a line item on our balance sheet so that we don't include it in the ending balance because it's an obligation, a future obligation, but nonetheless, an obligation. And we're doing the prudent, conservative, fiscally conservative thing by setting it aside. And I think it really should be a line item at some point in the future, but...
I think it will get spent rather quickly.
Yes. Thank you.
Just to answer, I guess, the higher level part of that question, as we, was shared with the Budget Committee, we are forecasting a pretty depleted working capital by the end of fiscal year 18-19. And any drawdown from that beyond what the Budget Committee has recommended to council would accelerate that and potentially put the city into a negative cash balance by the end of that fiscal year of 18-19.
All right. Counselor McCoyd, followed by Counselor Nanki, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Well, I understand the need for us to look at everything fiscally and look at how we've got the money, and we've, we've got to have a reserve fund. I still go back to a statement I made in the Budget Committee, our number one priority is public safety. That's number one. I went door to door, knocked on over 3,500 doors in my campaign personally. And, and it was what I was talking about. Number one, we spend our money and we prioritize it. One's public safety. We go public, we work our way down. I had nobody that disagreed with me at all. So, that's what we're talking about here. And if something has to be cut down the road, it shouldn't be public safety. We cut it, it's not working. We can see the response times are going up. We've got Council Dickey's area is, got woeful response times, closely followed by my ward, which are just about as bad. And something has to be done with them. I like, I like, again, this, this motion because it's saying, here's the money, figure out how to best do that and work on these issues, because these are major issues. When I hear testimony that says, well, if we don't get there within five minutes, then you've got a heart attack, you're like, you're, you're, you know, the likelihood of your surviving said heart attack is not good. And I have a district where half the, half the quarter-mile segments we're grading by are eight minutes or more. I represent that ward, and I was elected to represent their interests. And if I don't vote for this, I'm not doing that. And frankly, I don't know how you can, you know, and the city, city manager rightly puts out, we've looked at a five-year budget, and if we don't do anything, if we don't do anything, we're going to have a $5 million deficit, or we're going to be $5 million in a hole. Well, we're not going to have that happen anyway. So, the tough cuts are going to have to be made one way or the other in the next two or three years. Whether we do this or not, we're going to have to make tough cuts. So, we might add a little bit to those tough cuts, but at the same time, we're going to be taking care of public safety and prioritizing where those cuts are made. And in my mind, they shouldn't be made on the back of public safety. They ought to go, and we have to find other ways to do that. So, I'm going to vote for that. I support this amendment. I would urge everybody else to do so, and remember what we're here to do.
Counselor Nanki, followed by Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, public safety is one of our highest priorities. Part of the reason why those two fire stations were shut down is because we turned one on 24 hours a day when the chief said he could run it at 40 hours. And we saw what that amount of money did over the course of two years and how that compounded in. We're talking three years down the line will be at nothing. Add on 1.7, three years in a row, that means in two years, we're going to have to close the library entirely if we don't touch public safety and cease all operations in parks, or totally annihilate some other department. There will be several new counselors sitting here next year as well. I have no idea where they're going to go, and three years from now as well. But to say that public safety will not be impacted by a significant budget decision that has to be made in the next five years, I don't, it will not happen, that we affect them 0%. So, by doing this, we're guaranteeing that we're going to actually have to close more. And those, if we add folks on, we're going to let them go, and a bunch more as well, because we're compounding that year after year. I'm still not convinced there are alternate ways to improve that response time using outside resources, which we will not have to pay PERS for, which we will not have to pay increased healthcare benefits for. I think it's irresponsible without council sitting down and having a full conversation on how we improve those response times to just rip 1.7 million out of our ending fund balance. So, I will not be supporting said motion.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Benjamin.
This is clearly a crucial issue facing all the counselors, and it's clearly an emotional issue, as we can tell from some of the comments by the counselors here already. And I'm prepared to propose an amendment to the amendment, you know, to take care of, to reach some sort of compromise in between where we don't look at this and say, oh, my God, the sky is falling, the sky is falling, as we give this. That's one end of this. The other end is the critical life, safety things that we need to pay attention to. So, I'm going to move to amend the amendment to the motion to add $546,500 to the Fire Department budget to allow for the recruitment, hiring, training, and cost of three employees for nine months, and the cost of overtime from July 1 for three months on, to provide an additional 40 hours per week of coverage within the city at the discretion of the fire chief and the city manager. And we will recall, well, I can't, I won't say anything else, because I have to have a second. If I don't have a second, we can't discuss it.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Benjamin. Counselor Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, I think...
Which is an amendment to the motion.
Yes. We, we, this was a large item of discussion at the Budget Committee meeting, and I proposed this at the Budget Committee meeting as kind of a compromise. There were three, there were four potentials: do nothing, add $359,000, open it once we get people trained, and then this one, and then the full opening. You know, it's, it's, it's a very delicate balancing here, and I'm cognizant of each side of this. And I think this is the best way I can look at to satisfy some of each sides of the, of the appropriate concerns on either end of this matter.
Can that dollar figure again, please, was?
Yes. I got this from the Budget Committee meeting. It's $546,500.
$546,500?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And in effect, it's 40 extra hours a week for the fire chief, starting July 1, to use as he sees fit with, I guess it's an additional crew, is what it looks like, a three-person crew.
Three-person crew. Okay.
For 40 hours.
For 40 hours a week? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. Forty hours a week.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, the motion on the floor by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Benjamin is a, an amendment to the previous motion.
Amendment to the amendment.
It's an amendment, is it an amendment to the amendment? Okay. So, this works by, we vote on the amendment to the amendment, and then we go back and vote on the amendment? Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Counselor Benjamin?
I certainly understand, going forward, that we do have some liabilities, that we can't just go for full public safety, opening two or one fire station. But the reason why I seconded Counselor Anderson's amendment is that we could prime the pump now, get things started. There's already some, some grants in the works. Hopefully, those will come through. But this will have, kind of put our feet to the fire to make, take the time to plan out, how can we open a fire station and keep it funded going forward? We could do nothing now, because we understand there's a fiscal cliff. And from what I've heard from counselors that have been here much longer than me, that cliff just keeps, we keep running along the side of it.
Because we keep firing people.
Right. And so, you know, here's an opportunity to turn some of that red into orange, potentially green. But then, very shortly, I think we all should get together, maybe have work sessions, or however that goes forward. How can we now go forward in opening a fire station full throttle? What can be done, a work session? So, that's, that's it.
All right. Is there further comment on the motion? All right. The motion on the floor is the amendment to the amended motion. Amended to...
The Counselor Anderson's motion is an amendment to the amendment. And then you'll vote on the amendment to the amendment. If that passes, then you'll vote on the motion as amended.
Right. All right. All those in favor of the amendment to the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Nay. All right. The nays, raise your hands, or I believe, did I hear you, Counselor Bennett?
I, I'm a no.
You're a no. All right. Counselor Lewis, Counselor Bednarz, Counselor Dickey, Counselor McCoyd, Counselor Nanki, and Mayor Peterson, and Counselor Bennett voting no. The motion fails, which takes us back to the amendment, which was offered by Counselor Dickey, which was to provide an additional $1.7 million to the Fire Department budget for the purpose of personnel and determination by the city manager and fire chief as to how those funds would be expended. Does that pretty much summarize what you had to say? All right. So, that's the motion on the floor. Is there any discussion regarding that motion?
If I may appoint a clarification, that 1.7 would include some for equipment and materials. It wouldn't be strictly personnel. A small amount would be needed for equipment.
What kind of equipment do we need?
Turn on a fire truck.
I thought...
Actually, it wasn't the 1.7. It was at the discretion of the city manager and our fire chief.
No, you said, you said for personnel.
Staffing, but if there's...
You said for personnel, yeah.
In our original, in our original staff report, the 1.36 million included $130,000 for all the bunker gear and the uniforms and those types of things. So, that would be inclusive in the 1.7 as well.
I see. Okay.
I would just, I would say, I would consider that part of staffing, obviously. If we're hiring staff, then they, they need to have their individual gear, yes.
Yeah, gear. Okay. All right. All right. So, that's the motion on the floor. Counselor Lewis.
Please don't think this contradictory, but I'm going to vote for the motion. If for no other reason, we go around and around and around about this so-called cliff for our budget situation, I'm inclined to bring the true issue to us faster. And the way to do that, spend more money.
All right. Counselor Anderson.
I will vote for the motion, too. I made my attempt to come in the middle, and I don't know how many of the no votes were, no because they don't want anything, or no because they wanted the bigger ones. So, I'm going to vote for the amendment.
Counselor Bednarz?
I don't think we need to hash out a whole bunch more words here. I think Counselor McCoyd spoke eloquently a few minutes ago about, I too believe it's the number one reason. Public services, whether it's police, fires, streets, lights, that kind of thing, water, so are core to what we have to provide as a city government. And, and this is why I'm going to support the same, this measure, or this motion rather. I think it's just, I think it's great. It's the right thing to do.
I have decided that I'm going to vote in favor of this motion, but I'm going to vote in favor of this motion because I'm also going to be offering another motion that has to do with standards of cover. And I strongly believe that it's time for our city, like many cities across the nation, to look at how emergency services are provided, how emergency medical services are provided, how emergency fire services are provided, and come to perhaps a more modern form of public safety. And so, I will support this motion, but only with the strong recommendation, and I'll have a motion, that we, we don't just keep doing it the same old way. We've got to be more modern than that, and we've got to be smarter than that. And that's the only way we're going to truly provide public safety in this community going forward. Counselor McCoyd, and then Counselor Nanki.
Madam Mayor, I couldn't agree with you more on that. I, you know, it's, we are where we're at right now, so we're taking this path. But I would hope that we start getting innovative and figuring out different ways to deal with the problems we've got. I'm not convinced that doing this is going to drastically reduce response times in Ward 4. It's going to help, but I think long-term, we've got to look at different ways of covering these wards, where we're pulling people out, moving them around, and leaving places uncovered, and all those things that are adding up to that. We've got to figure out and be innovative and figure out a better way, a better mousetrap to do what we're doing. The old way's not working. So, with the funding we've got, as Counselor Nanki says, it's, we're not, we're going to be scratching to keep what we've got here going. So, we better figure out a better way to use the money to get where we need to be.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a final comment. I'm not opposed to the intent of the motion at all, but to do the right thing, we should cut $1.7 million somewhere else in the general fund.
All right. Counselor, Counselor Bennett, would you like to say something? I don't mean to be leaving you out of the conversation.
No, just go ahead and leave me out as it starts to go that direction.
All right. All right. I think the, time for the question. Oh, Counselor Benjamin.
I think, was it a couple of weeks ago, we had this same thing pop up, and I voted for, yeah, let's just drop a quarter right here and put 1.7 million on the table. And then I'll put our feet to the fire to figure out, how are we going to pay for this moving forward? You know, and I like the idea of like, well, maybe we can kind of ease into it, have that conversation, and then go full throttle with Counselor Anderson's motion. And I will be voting for this one, because I voted for it the first time. Let's just go full throttle and then, and then get it to work with work sessions and whatnot.
All right. Any further comments? I think we're ready for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with one no vote registered by Counselor Nanki. And I, at this point, would like to offer a motion to direct that an update of the 2011 standards of cover be completed, and the update include a review of goals and measures, excuse me, for fire and emergency medical services. I am sorry. And best practices to meet the goals and the measures. This was done in, as I say, 2011. It's a manual. It's about this thick. I didn't read it from cover to cover. I admit that. But I'm wholeheartedly in favor of having our staff have the opportunity to really update that and to really look at new and innovative and additional ways to provide public service, fire and emergency medical. And so, my motion is to direct staff. And I don't have a timeframe or a dollar amount to offer in this motion, but I would, I would propose that this work begin... I would propose that this work begin immediately or as quickly as possible.
There are, there are funds in the fiscal year 1617 budget for this type of review. As you mentioned, the, the fire chief had been, we've been talking about the need to update the 2011 standards of cover. So this is, this is something we can, we can, we can launch, we can launch perhaps as early as next month.
Great. Okay. All right. Thank you. It was, it was moved by myself and seconded by, was that Counselor McCoy? Thank you very much. And is there discussion? Yes. Counselor Bennett, Counselor Bednarz.
Do we, do we have, yeah, Bennett's at the other end of the.
I know, he's right there. I can see him.
Do we have a ballpark idea of what we're talking about? The cost wise, are we talking, you know, a few thousand or a hundred thousand dollars for a project like this?
To update the standards of cover?
We've done it once, so we must have some sort of structure to hang work on.
I think the fire chief probably has some information.
It would just be helpful to know that we're talking about a few thousand as opposed to a hundred or more thousand kind of thing.
Yeah.
We budgeted 15,000 in extra budget for, for this very purpose.
That's, that's about the average of, of the cost. And to ensure that the scope of work is as, as comprehensive as I believe the intent of, of the motion is, we may need to supplement that to make sure it's a full review of best practices, the other components to the.
Yes, if we need to expand it, we would certainly do that.
All right. Are there further comments? Questions? Counselor Dickey.
I fully support this. I think it's the right thing to do. I mean, we, we've got a lot of, well, I'll just stop there, but say, I, I think we need to do this. It's been a while. It's been five years. So, but I did, just have a process question. So this is part of the budget motion hearing that we're having, or is this, I, just to understand where we are in the agenda.
Right. Well, I sort of slipped this in.
You did.
I did. And I just thought we could just do it and get it done with and then go back to the main motion for the budget.
Actually, I think I have, well, Counselor Dickey, I have the answer too.
Do you have a question, Counselor Bednarz?
This is the motion after, she made the motion for the 1.7 and then it was, you called me up next after that.
Yeah. We're done with the budget.
And then you came in with the.
She moved an amendment.
No, we had an amendment. We haven't voted on the budget yet.
So what I have to say is real simple.
Yes, go ahead.
What Counselor Dickey just did with her motion for 1.7 to the fire chief and the city, through the city manager, was exactly the same motion I was going to make. But you beat me to it, so.
All right.
I, I had the same thing in mind, that it was, you know, important enough, so I don't need to have my motion anymore.
All right. It sounds like we have a motion on the floor for the updating of the 2011 standards of cover. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Then we're back to the budget as amended. And that motion was originally made by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Bednarz, indeed? Okay. All right. That motion on the floor is to direct staff to return with the resolution at the June 27th meeting to adopt the budget as provided in our agenda packets. Is there discussion of that? Counselor Bednarz and Counselor Lewis.
Just real quickly, so after tonight, there are no more changes. We're not going to change this on the 27th at all. It's going to come to us as a resolution in concrete. Do we vote it up or we vote it down at that point?
To clarify the motion, it included what the mayor said also to increase appropriation authority for the Building and Safety Fund as the original motion stated and as you amended it with Counselor Dickey's motion.
All right. So that is, oh, yes.
You, you, you could still amend the budget on the 27th. We're not recommending that. We would be.
Special meeting on 28th.
All right. Motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries unanimously, the motion carries with one no vote by Counselor Nanki. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Bennett. Are you leaving us?
I am. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We, we enjoy having you with us this evening.
Good night, Paul.
All right. Have a great vacation.
Bye.
Bye. All right. We're going to take a very quick break so that people can move around a little bit and those who are done can take off. All right. We're going to reconvene this evening's meeting. This is the Salem City Council for Monday, June 6, 2016. We're going to come back into session and take up where we left off. And we left off at the end of the budget hearing, but we have another hearing that is related. And that is the public hearing for the state revenue sharing funds. So I'm going to reorder us here or, and ask Kelly Jacobs if you have a report for us.
I do. I have another brief introduction to a public hearing.
Thank you.
To receive state revenue sharing funds, the city is required to hold two public hearings. The first public hearing to discuss the possible uses of state revenue sharing funds was held by the Budget Committee on April 13, 2016. This evening's public hearing, which covers the proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds, was noticed in the Statesman Journal on May 26, 2016. The proposed use of state revenue sharing funds, as recommended by the Budget Committee, is an offset to the costs of providing police patrol services. City Council approval of this proposed use is signified by adoption of Resolution 2006-19. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We have no one signed up for this evening's public hearing on the state revenue sharing funds. Was there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak to that? All right. Then we will go to questions of staff. Do counselors have any questions for Ms. Jacobs? All right. None? Then I would entertain a motion. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion for us? Oh, I have to close the public hearing first. All right.
I move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Bednarz to move the staff recommendation for the item 16-061 on the agenda this evening for state revenue sharing funds. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is that our first unanimous vote tonight?
Don't count on it anymore.
Oh. Okay. I won't. All right. We're going to back up now to the consent calendar, which on this agenda is item three. Counselor McCoy, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following poll. Item 3.3D by Counselor Anderson. Yes.
By Counselor Anderson. Okay. I had.
Nope. I got it under control.
You're reading my mind? All right. Okay. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor McCoy, would you like to introduce to us what is in this consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We've got quite a few resolutions and action items here. First resolution's adopting the downtown parking district's fiscal year 201617 budget and setting the business paid parking tax, which is at about $147 a space for the businesses that participate and pay for spaces based on their customers' usage. And the budget is about a $2.1 million budget. The second is resolutions, airport fee resolution, where we've done, the staff has done a really thorough study, hired a consultant, went out and compared our, our rates for renting and leasing hangars and fuel rates and landing fees and tie-down fees with other airports in the area, Hillsborough, Aurora, Corvallis, I think Independence, I forget, there's a couple others in there. But, and, and the result is, we're coming back with some proposed rates that are competitive with those other airports in the area, but raise the, raise those rates and improve the revenue so we can keep that airport competitive and open. Number, the third resolution sets fees and charges for all pre-hospital, emergency and non-emergency medical treatment ambulance transport, transport services provided by Salem Fire Department. And it's a one point, and there's an increase of about 1.19% on those, on those fees. Under action items, we've got an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Salem Kaiser School District and the city for police services during the 201516 year, which basically, we have a, an agreement, and then we've got a sergeant, I guess it's a corporal, and seven officers that work with the schools, the high schools and the middle schools in the area. And they want some service here during the summer school area in June and July, so this mends the contract for that amount of time to allow those officers and, and the school district pays half the, half the cost of those officers' time and labor. B is purchasing, the staff, it's a recommendation that City Council authorize the city manager to execute annual renewable contracts with Northwest Rock Inc., doing business with Salem Mobile Mix. A city employee-owned firm is primary provider for whatever CDB is and for truck hauling CDB is used in backfilling excavations in accordance with City of Salem construction standards during regular business hours on a routine basis. Hauling services are intended for ditch cleaning, repair, excavation material removal in accordance with the City of Salem construction standards during regular business hours. Item C is an application for funding from the Energy Trust of Oregon, for a grant from the Energy Trust of Oregon for rebuilding the south primary effluent pump at the Willow Lake Water Pollution Control Facility. Energy Trust of Oregon has grants up, and it authorizes the city manager to apply for and if granted, accept a grant up to $40,000 from the Energy Trust of Oregon to offset the cost of, to rebuild the said, said pump. Item E is another, item E is another intergovernmental agreement with the Salem Kaiser School District, this time for police services for the upcoming 20162017 school year. We talked about that. It pays for nine officers working with the high schools and the middle schools. And in our intergovernmental agreement, the school district pays half the cost for those officers. Item F is an extension agreement for cooperative facility use with the Salem Kaiser School District. This would authorize the city manager to execute a one-year extension to continue the cooperative facility use agreement between the city and the school district. And this has to do with city programs using some of the school district's facilities and the school district using some of the city's facilities where they have parks that are adjoining schools. So an ongoing agreement that is, is one more year while they look at it and in preparation for a longer-term agreement, and this is adding on to a three-year contract. And that is the consent calendar. Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We've all heard a rundown of the consent calendar and I would ask now that we vote on the motion before the council to adopt the consent calendar as presented by Counselor President, Council President Steve McCoy.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Yes.
I have one comment and that's on the employee-owned business.
Yes.
I just want to point out, of course, that this was a public bid and the city has requirements on, on bidding, that they have to accept the lowest qualifying bidder in situations like that, and that's what it was. So it's an arm-length transaction. The company just happens to be owned by a city employee. Yeah.
That's right.
So, just wanted to put that out there because sometimes you could say, oh, inside deal. If we were in Chicago, you could say that, but we're here in Salem.
Let's not start having the city of Chicago angry with us, okay? They got better.
They got, they got more problems than they concern about us.
All right. The motion on the floor to adopt this consent calendar. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We will go to item.
Special order. Special order.
3.3, thank you. 3.3D for presentation from, or a motion from Counselor Anderson, perhaps?
Yes, ma'am.
This was the item that you had pulled.
Madam Mayor, before the motion is being made for this particular item, I want to recuse myself. I haven't seen the specifics, but it looks like I might have an actual conflict that along the 12th Street, there's a piece of property that would be owned by a member of my family, so I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion and voting on this matter.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I make the motion, I'd like to point out that the staff report is not exactly correct as to where this particular improvement is on 12th Street. It's not in Ward One, it's in Ward Two. It's not Counselor Bennett, it's Counselor Anderson. The neighborhood groups are not Can Do, Grant, Highland, Ned, and West Salem. The neighborhood groups, yeah. The neighborhood groups are Scan and maybe a bit of Morningside on the far south end of 12th. I'm not really sure. It goes up to Fairview and that's kind of a hazy south end of the neighborhood. But I think it's like 90, 95% Scan neighborhood. And I'm the counselor on, on, in that neighborhood. Having said all that, I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement for right-of-way services with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the 12th Street Southbound Widening Improvement Project. And I do have a question of staff, if, if that's the time.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Nanki. And Counselor Anderson, you have a question or a comment?
Yeah. I have a question. And I've talked to Dr. Thurman before on this. And there's been some concern expressed to me and also at the Scan Neighborhood Group about the fact that there are no sidewalks now at all between Hoyt Street and Clark Creek on either side of 12th. And especially on the west side of 12th, that's a very important area. And part of the concern that has been expressed is a new medical clinic went in there just north of Clark's, Clark Creek, and they didn't put in a sidewalk. And so there was some concern expressed about, well, why didn't they have to pay to put in a sidewalk? And I know Assistant or Deputy Public Works Director Thurman can, can give some response to that question as to what, you know, where are the sidewalks going to be put in and why weren't their sidewalks put in earlier?
Sure. Robert Chandler.
I'm sorry. I'll tell you who Robert Thurman is. Robert Thurman is, is a tenured professor at Columbia University of Buddhism. And he's also Uma Thurman's father, if we really want to talk about this. Yeah. And so I thought, I, I thought, Mr. Chandler, you were upset at me because I called you doctor, which is an, which is an appropriate title for you.
Doctor's correct.
Yes.
No relation to Mr. Thurman.
Thurman, yes.
But that said, I do owe you an apology for the affected wards and, and the neighborhoods. I'm sorry about that.
So we're even on both of those.
So it is a common question, you know, when are street improvements required? The Salem Revised Code's fairly clear on this, it's chapter 77, where if a development has, is next to a street that does not have all full street improvements, the developer's required to make those improvements up to the center line of the street. And those improvements, sidewalks, cutters, curbs, pipe drainage systems, signs, things like that. And that is a condition for the developer to be given the permits, unless it makes sense to defer those improvements for later. We have done that periodically, like for sidewalk improvements and other places where we know we're coming in later with sidewalks. So a single contractor typically managed by the city can run a full street sidewalk improvements. It's a deferral agreement and it comes, sometimes those can last quite a long time. In this case, we knew that developer, well, the developer did qualify, that he needed to do those street improvements. But we also knew we were coming in with this project and the streets and bridges bond measure to make those improvements soon, soon after this project was done. And so rather than have the developer do the project and then we might have to rip it up again, bad practice, we entered into an agreement with a developer. The developer paid a fee in lieu of making these improvements and those monies were used as part of the cost that will build sidewalks there on the west side of 12th.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
That was a perfect explanation, Dr. Chandler.
All right. There's a motion.
Well, I just have one question. The sidewalks are on the west side of the street and not on the east side of the street?
That is correct. That is correct. Our project will build sidewalks on the west side of 12th.
And that's the sidewalk where really the, the foot traffic is there because the South Salem Baseball Field is there, and there's some other things there, and the other side is a hard-walking spot because of McGill Crest and the 12th, 13th couplet, so, so I think that's appropriate.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Nanki.
And Dr. Thurmond could come nowhere close to giving as efficient of an explanation there.
He'd be, his legs would be in the Lotus position, and.
My question is, is somewhat similar. I know the project in itself has slipped a little bit schedule-wise. Do the property owners know what's happening? As far as potential condemnations and what have you?
I would like to say, yes, we're pretty good, Public Works is doing very good at notifying property owners' residents of projects we do. It is par for our course. Sometimes we miss some, but to my knowledge, I'm looking city engineer, we've made all notifications necessary, typically.
Because I, I talk to a couple of those people all the time, and I've been hesitant to actually say, hey, so what do you think of this?
They should. We're pretty good at notifying customers.
Okay, good.
All right. Any further discussion on this item which had been pulled from the consent calendar? All right, the motion is to adopt the item 3.3D. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, on your agenda, you see there are a couple of information reports. If you have questions about those, let that be known right now.
No, they're beautiful.
No, all right. We will move to ordinances, 7.1 for first reading. Would the city recorder please introduce the ordinance?
An ordinance relating to dance studios and similar physical fitness instructional activities in the commercial office zone, rebuilding and continued use of duplexes in the retail commercial, general commercial, industrial commercial, industrial park, and general industrial commercial zones, self-service storage in the riverfront overlay zone, amending Salem Revised Code sections 521.005, 522.005, 522.010, 523.005, .010, 551.005, 551.010, 553.005, 553.010, 554.005, 554.010, and 617.015.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have a motion, Counselor McCoyd?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoyd and seconded by Counselor Nanki. Is there discussion? All right, hearing done. Counselor McCoyd, the motion is to adopt, do you have a motion for us?
It is.
You just made the motion, all right.
Staff recommendation.
The recommendation, thank you. All right, all those in favor of the recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. We have no ordinances for second reading, and is anyone signed up for public comment? No, not tonight. We have no new business, no mayor's items or counselor's items, we are adjourned.